Okay, I'm going to call the regular meeting of the whole committee to order. Okay, so we'll... Any introduction of late items?
Yeah.
I have the introduction of the item, item 15B.
Mr. Lauda Gallia, Mrs. Berry Gallia.
Orders of the property in South Park, they would like you to consult. I wanted to make an incentive information to them, but it didn't get on your agenda. So I would like to give them some...
Ten minutes?
So I'd make that motion.
Motion made, or seconded?
Seconded.
May discussion? Call the question all in favor. I didn't catch their names.
Lauda, Gallia, and Berry Gallia.
Call the question all in favor. All's seen that motion carries. Adoption of minutes?
Our agreement on the agenda.
Okay.
Adoption of the agenda as amended.
Sorry, thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Motion carries. Could I please have adoption of the minutes? Thirty minutes, no minutes, thank you. Presentations. We're going to have presentations on records management assessment and strategic plan. This will be introduced by Sheila Gury, our senior clerk. Ms. Gury?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, we have Mr. Ken Oldenberger here. And I'll just explain a bit of the background first before he gets into his presentation. So the City of Nanaimo and me hired a consultant, Mr. Oldenberger, to review the city of Nanaimo's current paper and electronic records and information management practices. We asked for an assessment of the current situation as well as a roadmap that would describe the steps necessary to bring us to a healthy records management environment and also prepare us for an enterprise content management or electronic records management system. So our goal is to get to a point where we have well-organized and easily accessible records to improve efficiency, productivity, transparency, and accountability, just to start with. That's just the minimum of what we're looking for. We wanted to identify the areas that we can improve and the steps that we need to take in order to do so. So in this desire, we hired Mr. Oldenberger, who has been consulting in records management and information governance for over 20 years. Ken has experience...
You are the only participant in the conference. Please grab...
Ken has experience in every aspect of records management with emphasis on records classification and retention schedule design, policies and procedures, implementation and training. He is certified in generally accepted records keeping principles and has conducted numerous records management assessments using these principles and created strategic plans for many local governments. He has prepared his report and his ears to bring it to you today. So welcome, Ken.
Thank you, Ms. Gold.
Good evening, citizens and counselors and staff. There we go. That's why we're here. The most scintillating and entertaining of topics: records management. Now, Sheila has already gone through the purpose of why this project was done. I want to highlight the fact that this is ultimately in support of Bylaw 7150. I know you all have it memorized, which is very impressive. It's your records management bylaw. And that states that you need to have a number of elements in order to properly fulfill this bylaw. So this, what we're looking at here, is kind of assessing your current environment to see how we're doing against generally accepted record-keeping principles and then give you a strategic plan going forward in order to meet those requirements. So everything's based on this: the generally accepted record-keeping principles. You've all heard about the generally accepted accounting principles in finance, same sort of thing. And actually, it's a very good analogy to kind of say, what is records management? And what is a records management program? A good analogy is to say, what is a financial management program? So in a financial management program, you have people, you have policies and procedures, you have training of staff, you have software in order to help you manage all those financial assets. But in records management, of course, we're not talking about financial assets. We're talking about information assets. So the records, the documents, the information that's in databases, all that sort of stuff. That's all records management. So this maturity model, we have eight different principles. Under here, there were eight different principles, and you'll see these in a second. Each principle, we can do a measurement from 1.0 to 5.0. So going through those levels very quickly, 1.0 to 1.9 is considered substandard and that there are unreasonable financial risks and legal risks associated with numbers being in those, in that range. 2.0 to 2.9, that's where we're starting to see some awareness of records management needs, some real positive sort of movement in that area. So we usually call that in development, and it's, there is still substantial risk. So you can't, you can't sit there. That's not a good place to sit either. 3.0 to 3.9, that's essential. This is where we start to see healthy records management programs, okay? 4.0 to 4.9, that's proactive. That's when we're going out and making sure that we know what the latest and greatest sort of theories behind records management are and we're embracing them and bringing them into our organization and stuff like that. That's probably a little bit beyond a local government of any kind. That's more for organizations like CSIS or medical companies or mines that are dealing with hazardous materials, that sort of stuff. They should probably be in the 4.0 to 4.9. 5.0, that's light years ahead of where we're ever going to be. That's what I call the Star Trek thing, where you go to the computer and you say, "Computer, collate the stuff from the last 20 years and give me a flow chart of, and it does it for you, and it's all wonderful and happy." Nobody's ever going to get to 5.0. If they do, I would retire and be happy. All right. The thing to keep in mind about these numbers is that it's really cheap to be in the 1.0 to 1.9. It's really, really cheap. There's a curve that goes like this in cost. 2.0, you're starting to get into some costs. So for example, you're hiring some staff, you're doing some training, but you're not quite there yet. 3.0 is that elbow. That's where you're investing some significant resources. You've got a line item in your corporate budget for records management. People are being trained regularly. You've got tools to help you do the work that you need to do. So just like in financial management, you have your financial management software. In records management, you have your records management software. And then, of course, that 4.0 is where it starts getting really expensive. And that's why only those guys that really have to do it have to do that. The flip side of this is the risk. So when you're in the 1.0 to 1.9, your risk is pretty high. And as you start educating and as you start learning and implementing things, your risk starts dropping down substantially. So the elbows meet kind of at the, at the nice sweet spot of 3.0 to 3.9. All right. Does that make sense? Okay. So here's the results that I came up with for the City of Nanaimo, current environment. How about we start with the negatives, with the not-so-nice numbers? Compliance and retention, you see, those are, those are pretty low. Even for an organization of your current environment, that's a bit low. So there's a few things that we need to do in order to fix that. The largely, I would say, what we need to do is get you some policies and procedures and get you, of which you have none, and get you a records classification and retention schedule that's implemented across the board. Once you do those two things, those numbers will go up substantially, dramatically in fact. So fortunately, I think it's probably going to be an easy fix. We'll talk about that a little bit more when we touch on the risks next. And then the positives. So we've got 2.2 on accountability, 1.9 in transparency, 2.2 in protection, and 2.0 in availability. For an organization of your level of maturity and stuff, that's pretty good. I mean, I, I would not sneeze at those numbers, especially the accountability. Accountability is the key principle in this whole thing. It's what I call the key strategic principle. Because if the accountability is good, the rest all get buoyed up. They, they move with accountability into the future. If accountability is low, it drags down all the other numbers. Accountability is essentially the roles and responsibilities structure in the organization. So starting from this body, you have delegated responsibility through Bylaw 7150 to somebody, and then that person has to delegate to other people and so on, all the way down to individual staff members. They need to know what their individual responsibilities are with regard to records management. So that's the structure going down, and then, of course, reporting goes back up. So that's accountability. Nothing, nothing rocket science there. You've probably heard that principle before in other sorts of things like GAP and stuff like that. The nice thing about that 2.2 accountability is it also indicates that you have a positive momentum. There is an awareness in this organization, from senior management down to each individual employee, that records management is something that is necessary, something that is valuable, and something that needs to be embraced. So capitalizing on that 2.2 should not be too difficult in the near future. All right. So that was the, the good and the bad.
Do you have any questions now or later? How many slides?
Only a few, like about a dozen. Okay. All right. So every organization has what I call common risks of doing nothing. You've probably all seen this sort of stuff. You have your low consequence, high frequency risks. One of my clients called this the grit in the gears. Those things that really just kind of suppress the efficiency of the entire organization. When we're talking about records management, the kinds of things that we're talking about are, you know, it takes you 20 minutes or an hour to find a document that you're looking for as opposed to two minutes or five minutes. So that lost time is grit in the gears. Another one would be, you know, do we know that the version that we have is the correct version? Is it the latest version? That sort of information is, is very important for keeping things moving. And there's a number of other ones which are in the, in the report, but I'm not going to list them all. I'll just give you an idea of what we're talking about here. Medium consequence, medium frequency? Probably the best example of this kind of a thing is a freedom of information request. So I mean, it's not at the level of a lawsuit, but it's got some reputational issues with it. If you can't meet your FOI requests in time, which it sounds like you're doing fine, you know, go ahead and, and make sure that those are covered. You want to make sure, for using FOI as an example, you want to make sure you've got all your information, you make sure that you got the current information, you have access to the information, it's not locked up in somebody's email address, that sort of thing. So that's the example of a medium consequence, medium frequency. And then here's the fun one, the high consequence, high frequency, or low frequency. These are the things that only occur once every few years or hopefully, once every 20 years or less. But these are the ones that, if you drop the ball on them, it could really, really cost you. I have seen a couple of lawsuits come through where, because they did bad records management, it cost them enough to pay for the records management program for 20 years in one go, easy. So these kind of things, even though they only come around once in a while, they are, they're painful when they hit. Okay. So these are common to any organization. Everybody's facing this sort of stuff. Then we have a couple that are specific. So we already talked about the compliance and the retention. These sorts of things, it's the idea of you need to have internal structures to comply with. Because you don't have any of those internal documents, the policies and procedures, the records classification and retention schedule, you can't actually comply against them. So there's this black hole of nothingness to comply with. That's easily repaired, actually. Like I mentioned, a couple of quick projects and we can start getting things moving towards implementing that across the organization. Implementation is another thing, but we need to develop them first. Now, this next one is very interesting. I did put it under a specific risk for Nanaimo because it's almost an opportunity as much as it is a risk. You've got all these different information systems. And an information system is a thing like a financial management system, geographical information system, your Tempest holds all your permits and all that sort of stuff. So all these different systems are out there, and they don't talk to each other. So it can be a little frustrating, and it can actually be a little bit embarrassing. Let's say somebody gets a permit, or the planning department says, "Go ahead, citizen, go and do this," and then bylaw enforcement comes by and says, "What are you doing? You can't do that." That would be an example of cross-circuiting your, your information. So we want to try to go towards a systems integration sort of concept. So GIS talks to Tempest, Tempest talks to SAP, SAP talks to... The trouble is, connecting all of those without a central hub is extremely difficult. And, and often, it just doesn't work. So what should exist in the middle is what we call an enterprise content management system. Something that absorbs the information from these different systems and pushes information back out. So they're all kind of connected and they, they can talk to each other. Now, I'm not going to make any promises because that's still a difficult thing, even with an ECM. But it's pretty much only possible with an ECM. Okay. So those are the two specific risks. One can be resolved relatively easily, and the other one, we'll see. But it's an opportunity that could actually be very, very interesting. All right. So in order, before you do an ECM, there are a few foundational elements that you have to have. And this is required in any records management program, even if you don't have a, an ECM. I mean, even my small clients, they all have to have these foundational elements, okay? Bylaw, you have a bylaw. You have an acceptable bylaw. Nothing wrong with it. Just leave it as it is and move on. That's easy. Policies and procedures, we need to develop some. And, and how many we develop and what depth we go into is something that we'll need to decide as we go along. But that's not a difficult thing at all. Records classification and retention schedule? Basically, what a records retention and classification, sorry, records classification and retention schedule is, is it's a set of pigeonholes. And the pigeonhole is where you put your files into. And that, so it's something like accounting. And within the accounting pigeonhole, you put accounts receivable, accounts payable, bank reconciliations, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. They all fit into that pigeonhole at a broad level. Then it's connected, that pigeonhole is connected to a retention period. So we're going to keep it for fiscal year, another six years or seven years, and then we're going to shred them. So it's that kind of a concept, that we have the pigeonhole associated with a retention period. So it's basically what it says: classification and retention. All right. Then comes implementation. It's all well and good to develop a bylaw and policies and procedures and a classification system. Now you have to implement it. And this is vital. There's actually going to be, what I've recommended in talking with your records people is, we're going to go through and implement the policies and procedures and the classification system and train staff on it, because training is vital to understanding this stuff. It's just like the financial management program. You wouldn't tell people to do your electronic timesheets, not, not tell them how to do it. Then the next set is, once you've implemented that classification system and trained people, we do an implementation of the ECM, and we train people on that. So the two are going to go kind of in lockstep together as we go along. And the idea is that we do a pilot project, so we don't sink ourselves. And I think that's all set up and ready to go. All right. Now, of course, that is a huge step. Because we have to touch basically every file that exists in paper form, and we have to organize and move every file that's in electronic form. So this is not a small step. In fact, it's two big steps. Okay. So we've talked a lot about ECM, this enterprise content management system. If we talk about generally what is enterprise content management, it's just a fancy word for saying that we are going to do things systematically. We're going to collect and organize the information. So that's that, we're going to have the pigeonhole, we're going to know which pigeonhole it's in, we know what the retention period is. There's all sorts of other things associated with this system, though. Things like security and access. So who has access to what? Who has the permission to change something? This system will also track all those changes. So if somebody goes in and mucks around with any kind of document, it knows who did those changes, and it will keep a copy of those changes. As a matter of fact, as an anecdote, I don't know if you've heard about this ransomware stuff that's going around. One of the ECMs I just heard about, and I can't confirm this, so it's hearsay, but their ECM apparently, when they, when the ransomware came in, it said, "That's fine, you go do your stuff, but I'm keeping a copy of the original." So the IT staff just went through and destroyed all the encrypted files, and they were back to business as usual. And the ransomware was useless. So that was, that sounded encouraging. Again, I can't verify that, but it sounds very, very plausible. All right. Other things that this does is it, it does disposition processing. Now, that's a fancy word for saying that it applies that retention period. So when, when a file is closed, it helps with closing the files. When a file is, has reached the end of its lifespan, it knows that, and it helps you to destroy things or send them to an archive or keep them permanently in your own storage, that sort of thing. But of course, the biggest thing is this is electronic. So we're talking, it manages the paper files as well, but it's really moving towards an electronic world. And the things that it can do electronically, I kind of touched on a little bit with that systems integration stuff. But it's some pretty exciting things, like workflows. Being able to approve an invoice without ever printing it off and getting a, a physical signature. So you have digital signatures, you have clear workflows already organized. It's pretty exciting if it's done right. So that's, and that's the tricky part, is a good implementation will make or break your ECM. Paperless. Are you going to be a paperless city? Well, actually, the law says that there are a few documents, about half a dozen, eight documents, that must be retained in physical format, but there's not a whole lot. A lot of them are able to be converted to, to electronic form. I do have a client who is about 98% electronic right now. So it's doable, and it's exciting. There's a few things, though, first. One is, you should try as much as possible to go electronic internally. So make your own processes electronic, as electronic as possible. So for example, your finance department sends me a nice letter when I get my check saying, "Why don't you go and set up an EFT with us, an electronic fund transfer? That way, we can just do it electronically." I'm like, "Oh, that's, that's a start, that's a, that's heading in the right direction." The next thing is encouraging and insisting on electronic records. So more and more, this is happening. So vendors are sending their stuff in electronically, and it is usable electronically. It's, it's like your building plans. They come in and they, they can go straight into, what is that, Blue, Blue something? Blue Beam. Blue Beam is a, a drawing program that they can work on, things electronically, never have to print it off. And this is doable. I've been doing this job for 22 years or so, and I've sent my invoices in electronically from the very beginning, and I've never had one rejected, which is nice. Okay. So once you've reduced the amount of physical, what still remains, now we start talking about scanning. The trick about scanning is the law says, if you receive something physically or create something physically, that is the official record. If you receive something electronically or create something electronically, that is the official record. So you don't have to print off something electronic in order to make it legally admissible in court. But if you do get something in paper and you want it to be digital and you want to destroy that paper, there is a Canadian standard that you must follow, two actually, CGSB 72.11 and 72.34. Those two standards kind of say what you need to do in order to destroy those original paper documents. So thing, one of, these are kind of the pillars that you need. One is, you have to have a healthy records management program. So that stuff, the bylaw, the policies and procedures, the classification system, you have to have people, you have to have training, it has to have been operating for a while, that sort of thing. You have to have an ECM. You have to have something that can track what's happening to your electronic records. Without that, you don't have an audit trail, and you can't go in front of a judge and say, "This electronic document is bona fide, and nobody has messed with it." And then, of course, you have to have a scanning policy and a scanning procedures manual. Once you have these pillars, scanning and destroying, you're looking at about 98% digital going here, all going into your ECM. That's when it gets cool. All right.
Do you have to start with that council kit, please?
Thank you very much. I love acronyms. Have to search them off when you're talking. With, with electronics storage, of course, cloud storage and stuff around, of course, I'm a junkie for files and storage always, I would love, like paper and electronics. With that EDRMS system, and you have a number of metadata files coming in from different platforms, and you try to merge those all the time. That's quite expensive, that software and the production of those files.
It is not cheap. There, there are potentially alternatives out there, but yeah, I won't go into the weeds on this one, but it's not a cheap process, like a financial management program. It's very similar.
If I can follow up to on that is, then you, you simply have to develop a file attribute system across the whole, the whole corporation? That's a base file, based on a master file system for that documentation?
So that would be the classification and retention schedule, I think.
Yeah, and so then with that, how do you break down the departmental information within that filing system? Because we have so many line items and so many physical departments, or as I think you refer to them as silos? No, I might have thought that when you said that.
Yeah, you thought that way. You're, you're absolutely right. So that, that ECM, it will track what department is associated with that file?
Well, if I can follow up, emergency management software, they've done that for decades now, where, and you can be resident somewhere else, power down, and as soon as the system comes back online, it starts to update all of the machine ware, all of the computer messaging. So all of your messages, all your notes, all your, your, everything goes into that file system and updated. Does this type of system, do we have that now? Where if we go down in power, and then when it comes back online, we have a base system that updates everything?
You have a pretty good backup system right now. Better than most, I would say, actually. So yeah, you've got a good backup system.
And if I can one further, we're always wondering, what is our real record? And I know we're on internet, and we're on, like, we go through the internet to the web, and we have broadcast on the web and things like that. And I know voice over here protocols are expensive to store, you know, and the size of filing. When we start doing that, now that we're recording these type of meetings, that causes us more storage space and more stuff we have to keep, isn't it?
That's, you're absolutely right. So first of all, in B.C., the Interpretation Act says that a record is anything that has information recorded on it. So that, and we start with everything. Everything's a record. Then we carve off a large portion of it by calling it transitory records. So copies of things, drafts of things, meeting notices, periodicals that you get sent, you know, that sort of stuff, that's all transitory. And there's a lot of it is transitory.
If I can say that, transient emails I get if I'm asking someone for coffee, I can give her that.
That's right.
Anything else in that. If I can follow up to, you say accountability is our 2.2. That's, that depends who that accountability is to. When I see 2.2 as one of our highest values out of detection, and we're looking into 3.9, it gets to be not quite, well, look a little... it gets to be not quite, well, a little wiggle of stretch. How do I say accountability? Is that, who am I accountable to with those community records? Accountable to the government who's checking here, am I accountable to the public? And that's to me, that was one of, with transparency being that 2.9, it's important to people. The other thing you touched on is we have a bylaw, a good bylaw in place. Well, but the bylaw obviously isn't pushing people to do the work. So just having a bylaw written that doesn't really push people to get the work done.
That's true.
Not really good bylaw. You know, because you explained it was a good bylaw, but for me, a bylaw makes people, it's a policy.
I think I said it was an acceptable pilot bylaw.
Exceptional, I must admit.
Not exceptional, no, it's not exceptional.
I appreciate it. Thanks for the question. I don't think I have anything else on that than you've answered the question.
So the accountability, that's an interesting thing. Accountability looks at internal accountability. So basically everybody's accountable in the organization to this body ultimately. But there's also accountability to external forces. So for example, the, the Freedom of Information Act for BC. It says municipalities shall have a reasonable records management program in order to do your FOI requests, that sort of thing. So there's, there's pressure from internal and external. You're not heavily regulated like a mine would be or a, or a, you know, those sorts of organizations. So you don't have a lot of these external regulations forcing you to do stuff like oil and gas. They've got tons of regulations, airports, that sort of thing.
Sarah?
Thank you, Mayor Chair. Thought I'd make a few different comments. We're going through a lot of change in these last two years and the records management has been something that the city has known that it's needed to do for quite some time. But in order to be able to do that and to move that forward, there has to be support from council. There has to be support from city managers' position to bring senior management to the table, to work with the two leads to do this project. And I would like to recognize the work of both IT and Legislative Services in the last year, maybe a couple of years now, that they've been slowly moving this file forward and communicating with the organization and letting them know how important this is and how that we all need to work together. And every department has its own ways of doing things and manages its records in its own ways. So that's tactical monumental change management to be able to do that. And I think that we're at a point based on two or three senior management meetings and solution meetings, repeating the messaging, getting the feedback, that we actually have a plan of attack that can have traction and implementation is possible. It's not going to have happened overnight. It's going to take a lot of effort to do it. But it's one of the most important things that we can do in this organization. And I know people focus on big capital projects and big buildings, but I think we should recognize the building we're doing internally in this organization. And adopting the Business Continuity Plan, which took over a year and took leadership and senior management to do it. Accepting and building the procurement platform. These all result in substantive changes over time for this organization in efficiencies, cost savings, consistency, and after the implementation, the training ease for staff to do these types of projects. So this one is our newest one that's coming down and I'm very, I'm terribly excited about it. And I think the work that's been done so far is fantastic. And I might invite both of you to say a few words afterwards. I'm not sure where in queue, acting mayor, but it's just worthwhile knowing how much effort and time and what it's like to build internal machinery that will support the operations of everything externally. So thank you very much for that presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Sarah. I have a council report.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Oldenberger. Appreciate the information. Very interesting, a little bit overwhelming for somebody like me. But I guess my question is what next? You mentioned a pilot project and what sort of timelines are we looking at?
So what next would be those first two foundational elements? Policies and procedures and the classification system. Now that's actually, that's actually a relatively easy thing to do is to design those things. I think we were talking about December to May to, as a timeline for those. And then, and then it's moving into the implementation phase. And, and that we don't know. Sheila? Oh, sorry, I'm not made.
Ms. Suri?
Thank you. Just to add to what Ken just said, we have it worked out into eight phases. So it's an eight-phase process. And he's right, we're looking at the policies and procedures and the first set of training to be done between December and May.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Bessman?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Oldenberger. Appreciate the information. Been something that you've been seeking for quite some time, so I appreciate this. My question, is this the entirety of the information that you have created under the contract?
Oh, no, no. Would you like me to go into a view of the points?
So this is a summary?
This is a summary. Oh, well, my presentation is a summary. If you have the--
There are thirty pages here.
Right.
That's the entirety of the information that you created?
The only other thing that we did was we did some functional requirements for the--
Well, I, that's through the chair. Well, I'm happy to see this information. It's rather disturbing. Someone who's center for a while. When I see things like poorly secured, not best practices, serious financial and legal risks. Yeah, then I could go on and on. I've circled all kinds of things in this document that raise liability.
Right.
And I don't know if you'll be the person to ask the question of, for the council report, is what's going, timelines and money? What's going to remove the inadequate, the inadequate, not best practice, poorly stored? All the things that I'm reading here, why the money?
That's ultimately the question, isn't it?
That's ultimately the question.
Go to her, Ms. Sarah, please.
So we've had two or three studies, maybe four or five in the last two years. And each time we bring them to council. We're bringing them in open because we think it's important that when an audit of an area of the city is done, that the findings need to be presented to council. And sometimes they don't, not as, wouldn't be doing an audit and taking a look at different areas if we were best practices and leading in, in that particular area. We've identified a need. We've hired consultants. They come in and take a, an audit of our practices. And an audit of our practice means that they look and go around the city and go, "How are you doing it in this department? How are you doing it in that department? What are you doing here? What are you doing there?" So they get a sense of how well we're doing. They give us a report card. They show us what we're doing well and where we need to make improvements. And if there's anything that's critical, that's high risk, that would expose the corporation to some type of liability, that would be highlighted and steps would be taken immediately to do so. His findings place us in, "Yeah, you've got some work to do and here's the first two things that you need to do. You need policies." In the absence of policies, there are no rules. And without rules, we don't know how to enforce and make sure there's compliance. So this step, they're standard, they're similar across local governments. So this step can be done relatively quickly. Then we have something in place that we can train people with. And then we can start stabilizing what we have and start building the other elements of it. So having been a bureaucrat and a lawyer for 22, 23 years, this report does not alarm me. The lack of, having not done this since I tried to get it done in 2013 alarmed me. But the fact that here we are in 2017, we finally have it here. I'm fully behind it, senior management's behind it. It's something that we're asking to fund and it's something that we want to roll out. So yes, areas of improvement, we will work on them. We have a strategy and it's a risk-based analysis of what each step will be. We're not trying to do everything at once. And I don't know if either of you want to speak a little bit to that?
Ms. Suri? I think now would be a good time for me to say what I was going to say. So I've been in the Legislative Services Department for ten years now and this has been on the books as a project that needed to be done for 10 years. And through various reasons and obstacles, that sort of thing, it didn't get started. So it is a major undertaking that thanks to IT and having Ken in, we are now doing it. It is, there's been a great need and we should have done it a long time ago. But we are doing it now and we are aware of it and we're being proactive about it. And Ken went, did go meet with every single department in the city of Menaimo. He met with their managers, he met with their records staff. He was impressed, I think, that there was such an awareness throughout the organization of the importance of this and an eagerness to get on track to, into doing the right thing. Some of the things, the initial steps that will do a huge service to us moving forward, the policies and procedures, won't take much to do, but they're, they are an integral part of this whole system working. Since I've been in this position the last year, I've learned a lot from other organizations that have implemented an enterprise content management system, but they didn't do this work first. So they got this very expensive system and they threw all of their garbage into it without cleaning it up and having these policies and procedures in place. And it became a very expensive garbage dump. So we are taking the steps to do it properly. We have worked together, IT and myself, to have it done in eight phases. So what will be done properly, cleanly? We'll have the policies and procedures in place, that then we can comply with them. And we will eventually hopefully get to 98% paperless. I just want to give a quick shout out to my team as well for East Thrive and Paperless in general. That's something that we have worked really hard on. Again, that was in the books as long as I've been in Legislative Services and we've pulled that out. So thank you, this guy especially. So that's just some of the things that I wanted to add to the discussion that we've been having. So I agree with what this number has said as well.
I can add a few, a few things. As, as Sheila mentioned, the, we have discussed records management for a long time. And I think that we have gotten to a good point where instead of just discussing it, we're actually got everyone on board, as is Samra. And so we have the technology. The technology has improved to a point where the technology that we can implement now is much better than we would 10 years ago. We have the collaboration and the buy-in. So I think we're actually positioned very well in terms of moving forward because we have talked to a lot of municipalities who have made a lot of mistakes and we can hope to avoid those mistakes by avoiding the things that they do. So I think we're in a good position. And one of the things that we've really been working with, at least on the IT side of projects, is to go a much more iterative process. So Ken mentioned the idea is to do a pilot. So not doing the whole organization at the same time. We want to do a small area and then work on all the things, make sure it works. And so that we don't, if you overload the whole organization and it doesn't work, then you don't get buy-in. And this project is all about buy-in and change and getting a cultural shift to capture this stuff. And I think we're positioned for that.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller?
Through the staff, this goes to records keeping, especially some of the most important ones. When I started here, this was the first time I ever heard of triple deleting emails, which we heard about in 2000, late 2015, 2016, that it was a practice of some staff in the past and I don't want to go to the present to do so. The email I got back in from a former IT dude, December 22nd of 2015, mentioned that there was a, there's a project scheduled for 2016 to upgrade the newer version of Microsoft Exchange, which can be configured to ensure that even if the individual queries recover deleted items area, the records will still be backed up. Was that ever implemented, put into place? That's the question for--
The manager of the Technical Services of IT is not here, so I can't comment on how far to the backup email there is.
Well, I don't think it's so much about backup. It's about being able to recover those that were deleted. Some to look into to see if we did add it and that we should add it, I think, especially for those important. We're seeing that in all levels of government, the deletion of emails. That should not be deleted.
They still remain on the server?
Yeah, we are actually looking into complementary programs that work with our ECM system to ensure that those records, no matter what, are captured and used.
Go on, please.
Okay, now myself, then I'll go there. Or sorry, no, okay. I just have a couple, actually I have lots of questions, but I'll leave them separately.
Sure.
One of my questions is, is this mandated by provincial law?
Uh, it, the Freedom of Information Act essentially says that you need to do this.
So, and does the Archives Act apply as well?
The Archives Act doesn't exist anymore. Well, there's an Archives Act, but that's, yeah, it doesn't apply to municipality. The old Document Disposal Act used to kind of imply as well that there was a need, but the new Information Management Act is not.
Uh, second question. When you were doing your, did you interview the RCP municipal employees?
Yes.
Would you say that they have a level of expertise that could be used with all the training that they have?
Yep. I think so.
Because I think probably they're extremely well versed. But on the federal side of the house, it still would be applicable also.
Ms. Suri?
Thank you, Mayor Chair. Also through, through the implementation of this, of this program, whether it goes full enterprise content management or just the policies and procedures, there will be an expert in each different department that will be charged with taking this on in their own area and be the experts in their own area. So the expertise throughout the organization that we have will definitely be utilized. And as well, they are looking at changing the Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act to include a duty to document. So that is going to be coming out and that will also, it, it, it will work well or it's, it's very similar in the same areas, even in records management. And our D will have to be to document and he documents public records and then into the future.
Thank you, Ms. Suri. My last question. When we talk about limitations in retention periods, are those retention periods set provincially or are they set by the municipality?
So that's an interesting question. When we decide on what a retention period is for one of those pigeonholes, there's a process where we make sure that we're meeting, first of all, the business need. So is it long enough for the business to do what they need to do? Then we go back, we look at the legislation and it can be provincial, it can be federal, it can even be municipal policy or municipal bylaw, but that's pretty rare. Usually it's like the federal, you know, like the Excise Tax Act that says you're going to keep your records for fiscal year and then another six years, that sort of thing. So we incorporate that into that retention period. So if the business need says, "Oh, we only need that for two years, but the law says we should probably keep it for at least six or seven," then we'll bump that up to six or seven. And that's, that'll be explained in the--
So I'm assuming you follow the normal course, which is federal procedures, provincial procedures as well?
Yeah. There's very, very few pieces of legislation that specifically say thou shalt keep for a certain amount of time.
Awesome, thank you. Our last question was if anybody else has reported, Counselor? I mean, yeah, Ms. Suri, that's twice now. We stopped saying council.
Why is on the court going another council? So the risk is there and the Office of the Information and Protection is basically, that is, I don't see a regulatory body here. That's my concern with this is, there's always a regulatory or legislative requirement, but I don't see that physically in a lot of our stuff. Like I've heard here, every municipality maker is making it up as they go now. We've heard others have implemented and it's been a mistake here, a mistake there. And we're fishing out the best ones of it. Why? There's records management from the BC government, they have standards, they have recorded information manuals. All of that is there.
Yeah.
And that's been there for a long time.
Yep.
It's been there, I know some of these since, I think, 2004 or '05, some of this stuff has been out there. I worked on file system in the fire department, for example, the number of file systems to keep careful files. It's an interesting one. So what is our ISO number? Do we have to worry about that now because we're getting into agreements like TILMOT and CETA and things like that? And they want to scrutinize our contract information and things like that.
Right.
Do we have an ISO standard?
There is. ISO 15489 is the records management ISO. Now fortunately, it's, it's more of an informational ISO. It's not like you have to meet this level in order to, that, and that's part of the reason why we did these principles. Because we didn't have-- we didn't have anything that we could do any measurements with.
ISO has that.
So, yeah, so we, now we have a way to go 1.0 to 5.0, that sort of thing. Yeah.
Um, yeah, so we, it's hard to say where our body is, other than Counselor making up its own bylaws.
Yeah.
And if the bylaws are, if they're not, if they're not mechanized driven and telling people what to do sometimes, that's tough. And I would handle it all the staff, but we delegate that. It's a delegated authority, but we'll wear whatever, we'll wear the risk.
That's right.
It's a delegated authority, lucky people. Um, so, yeah, I always had concern with not having master files or something, dated master files, you know, like what is an update, what is a, you know, what is a revision?
Right.
Data revision, when was the manual updated?
Absolutely.
Sort of a covering my legal authority, making sure it's all written down, but it has to be done too. Is this a core competency people should have within the system? I hear people are being made to be specialists within their area.
Right.
Or is the core competency filing, cross the filing system?
Yep.
Is the core competence going to be anybody who's handling paper?
So that's, that's interesting, actually. Sheila and I were just chatting about that before, before this meeting, because we have a core competencies document for, from the records management, it's called ARMA. ARMA has a core competency manual, which is very, very good. Uh, and it kind of goes through four levels. The first level would be like the folks in the different divisions or departments, they should be at, at least at that level one. And then, um, different levels all the way up to like a level four. Um, so there, there's some of that stuff, and I'm going to be talking with Sheila a bit more about those core competencies and incorporating some of that language from those core competencies into your job descriptions, things like that.
Based on a paper manual?
Yes. Actually, it's electronic, I've never seen a printed out one.
Um, I believe you can sit down, Jim, we just had Ms. Samra wants to do one clarifying point. Samra?
It's, it's not that, it's just, um...
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much. It's just, just thinking about it is we're a corporation, spending hundreds of millions of dollars year over year, and it is logical and sensical to have corporate records meeting that document how decisions are made, how we've complied with our internal bylaws and policies, be they procurement, be they environmental, be they zoning and bylaw. We need to keep a record of how we do business. And keeping everything in an unorganized fashion is not good. So having a policy and procedures on how to do it and everyone understanding how they do it within their areas is what we're starting to do. So, thank you.
Thanks. All right, moving on.
Will we proceed to the...
I'm sorry, yeah?
Oh, Billy. Thanks. Since all we're really receiving is report for information, is this something that's coming to us at the finance and audit committee? I'm hearing that, you know, staff support this and it's eight stages and et cetera, et cetera. When do we get it? And you need our support because it's something that staff believes is really important.
Well...
When, when do we get to see it?
We're going to be asking you for money in the budget.
When, when does this come to us?
It just came to you, Counselor Bestwick. We've taken you through what the plan approach is. We don't, you've delegated to me the operational responsibility for overseeing the implementation of this project.
So I, we received the presentation on record management.
And a report.
And a report, which tells us where our shortcomings are.
And our...
And you indicated to me and to us that there has to be information, there, there has to be support from Counsel. So for me, I need information. So I'm asking the question, will this come to us as a 2018 priority at every service level or whatever at one of our finance and audit committee meetings? That's what I'm asking.
Counselor Bestwick, through the acting chair, the answer is yes. As part of your finance and audit deliberations, line items will include the rollout of this plan.
Thank you. That's all I was asking.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. Just to add, through you, to Counselor Bestwick, we have developed a business plan that will be coming for you as well, like that is in our annual plans, while we want to come to Counselor and ask you to prepare a business plan, to put all the phases out, the costs and how we're going to do it. So you will be seeing that as business plan. This was a presentation kind of to give you the heads up, this is coming, and then we'll present it to a financial way and ask for money that we need.
Thank you both for your clarifications, and Counselor Kip.
I'll move the report for information and I have a comment, I got a second.
Session?
Well, when these reports come through to me and they see 250 hours of work and 20 hours traveling and accommodation costs, but that doesn't have a financial figure for me, and it's really, and so what I'm getting here is a pretty brochure of a pretty vehicle I'm going to drive, and I'm going to drive that vehicle for quite a few years. Ready? So we're going to drive this vehicle for a lot of years, and I've been trying to drive this vehicle for a lot of years, and spent a lot of money driving this vehicle up to this point. And they've been wanting to search records all the time to find out my information. So what I like when I get this report is that they're consistent, that they're the same, that they're easy to manage, because the number, and the numbers all correspond with something. And I like to know the economic value, I have a social value here, I have, you know, is it, is it going to be equitable for us to keep these records and have every video? People want to crawl out, pull out, and every time Jim insults someone, it's on the record and it's going to be stored for 40 years to prove that I'm unscibled. So try to get, you know, so for me, I agree with Counselor Bestwick, this is a great report for us. Staff's obviously had it for a little while, got to review it, correct what they have. I've had it only for a few days, it was a busy weekend for me, lost a bit of sleep, tired, busy. So for me, I want to see what it costs now, because all of a sudden I'm receiving it for information, and all of a sudden, well, you received this, you guys voted for this long time, well, you didn't even knew what we were going to spend. Well, no, I don't, when I go back into my records, I don't see those costs. And it's, and, so what's happening now is we're getting one priority at a time, and this is a big priority, and we haven't had much on it before. From 2016, we talked about some of this. So I know it's, it's timely and it's, it's important, but I want to see the cost, the facts and figures. If you're putting, like, you're just putting a business plan together now, you know, it's all theirs. Okay, so I haven't seen a business plan, I heard, I just heard earlier that we're just going to put the business plan together. So you see what I mean? I don't know, do you understand what I mean, but it's a bit anxious for me if I don't get the information. I tried to say that. So I appreciate that we're doing this, I hope it gets done. But, yeah, I want to see the costs, I want to see the social structure of our strategic plan, value of everything we do, every time. So thank you for listening and I'd be emotional.
I'm emotional too, but Ms. Samra, you want to clarify?
Yes, actually, so, to Counsel, through the Chair, this year we have implemented six meetings of the Finance and Audit Committee, and each of the themes of what's going to be presented at them have been outlined for you. And over the next six weeks, staff will be bringing to you investments in different areas of the organization, operations, departmental, capital plans, records management, eScribe stuff, everything will be coming to you. And in the Finance and Audit Committee, which you've created to have discussions about business cases, about dollar figures, and about financial impacts, that is the forum in which that will take place. And that's where you decide, not us, where you're going to invest in the budget this year. So you will have the business cases for adding one member to a department, the business case for putting together GIS, the business case for doing records management. All of that data will be in front of you. That's why we came to a COW, which is an informal environment for you to talk about this, and ask questions back and forth, and explore the idea of records management. Maybe it's not a priority to you, and we need to hear that from you before we go back. If you don't want to invest in that now, that's fine, so start asking us questions about what your concerns are, that's what this COW is for. And then when we meet in Finance and Audit, that's when you get the dollar figures, the FTEs required to do it, how it will be rolled out in the eight phases, what are the costs attributable to each of those. So that's, that's our new process, which is more transparent than it ever has been before. Everything is presented...
Excuse me, excuse me, Ms. Samra. Point of order, please, can I, can I just say?
You can, I'm part of the...
This is Samra.
Can I just finish my slide?
Well, I'm just saying, we're getting almost to a point where, I know this, I have this in my binder, I, we get this, we go, we, we get, we have this report, everybody should care with me, I know what you're doing, and so when I was asking questions, we were going to get the finance, I received the information. Thank you very much. I didn't need to hear it over and over again. Oh, you're stopping, leaving.
No, leaving?
Excuse me, I'd like to go in camera, please, I'd like to call in camera session.
No, a second here. For your patience, I'll work through this. Um, we will resume our session and I believe Counselor Kip would like to add one word.
Ms. Samra, I apologize for my inappropriate, inappropriate, inappropriate. Sorry to the gallery. I stepped aside, I'm sorry about that, it was inappropriate. We have to deal with it, in a lot better manner. I take responsibility for that, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much, Counselor Kip, for your acknowledgement of that, I appreciate that. Okay, if we can go back to our regular business and keep it on track, Ms. Samra, Ms. Gurry, please.
Um, thank you, Madam Chair. There was something that you were going to read out, you have a copy of that one.
Yes, I'm just going to read that, actually, to cover the business, but I can do it now.
Um, yeah, actually, just if we could read it before we get into the administration part of the agenda, that would be great.
Well, we have to, if we could finish our motion first, that's, thank you very much, Ms. Gurry. We did have a motion on the floor, Ms. Gurry, to receive the...
Receive the comments, then you can go on.
So we had our discussion, let me move on. We see that.
Motion to receive.
And second, by all in favor? Okay, I'm just going to read a document, which is, was a legal opinion, which was given to us, and I've been requested to read it. "Counsel does and has historically relied heavily on its officers and managers to inform and advise counsel in all matters involving the city. Provincial laws by which a city must operate are complex and take many years to learn. Many issues with which counsel must deal with are also complex. Therefore, counsel depends on the education and experience of the professional staff to inform counsel. This is to ensure bylaws, resolutions, and motions are within the law, that all proceedings are in accordance with parliamentary procedure, and that decisions minimize any liability to the city. Some of the city managers have statutory duties which cannot be altered by counsel. For example, our chief administrative officer has a legal duty, independent of counsel, to advise and inform counsel on the operations and affairs of the city, to ensure policies and programs are implemented, and to manage the operations of the city. The city is also responsible for ensuring the city maintains a respectful workplace, which includes public situations, such as council meetings and committees of the whole." Thank you. Ms. Gurry, if you could introduce her next line of questions, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So under Administration 6A on the agenda, you have the 2018 Council Key Date Calendar before you. Traditionally, this is voted on in a council meeting, so tonight you're receiving it for information alone. We're trying to bring committee of the holes back to their traditional purpose, which is to have counsel be able to sit down in a roundtable function and discuss matters before they go to be officially voted on at a council meeting. So before you is the key date calendar for 2018, and it's, it's for your information and for your discussion. So if there's items on the calendar that you wish for staff to move to further, that sort of thing, tonight would be a great evening for you to bring it up. So it's on page 33 of your agenda, and it's just to be received for information unless you have some questions or comments.
We have a motion to receive, seconded by Counselor Ford, discussion? Any discussion, Counsel? See none? All question? Any post? Thank you. Okay, Public Services, none. Public Safety, none. Correspondence, nothing related to the council. There was an email from Susan Chalmers of the Community Energy Association inviting Mayor Counsel to the Climate Energy Institute from November 1st to 3rd in Richmond, DC, regarding climate action trade. Any notice of motions? Other business? Ms. Gurry?
Thank you. Would you have somebody move their seat up, correspondents?
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you. Counselor Thorpe, seconded? Counselor Bestwick, all? Discussion?
Please.
Counselor Bestwick?
It's an invite to Mayor Counsel and staff, has anybody been identified from staff or, or counsel to participate in this event, any place?
Now, Ms. Samra, do you know?
Not yet.
Yeah?
So it's around the corner, obviously, it's, it's a week. November 1st to 3rd is, is something that we think is important to attend, to steer us and guide us into becoming green. And if any member of counsel would like to go, then I think that it should be somebody that intends to, at least at the very least, run for counsel. So, in the next election. So we get the benefit, the value of the persons that attend, wish to be representing the city.
Ms. Samra?
So I'll, I'll check with staff and, unless Dell, Lindsay's prepared to speak to it, and see whether or not it's of interest to certain of our staff, that they, it may or may not be, since they have their own certifications. So it might be something of interest for a person at the council level.
Counselor Fuller?
Yeah, I'd like to see counsel and staff attend if possible, if there's any interest in, if you can get us that information on where it stands within our strategic plan and priorities as well.
Any other discussion? All question, all favor? Delegations?
Delegation.
Yes, Counselor Vaughn?
Can I add, add, aspire to the delegations after the rest of them? Apparently Counselor Haun had talked to him last week and said he would run for the agenda, and I'm wondering if he can put him on the agenda. It's regarding, because it's not related to the report, I believe it's regarding the... send it here.
That's why.
If I can make that motion, it's a, it's a...
Do we have a second here? Ms. Gurry?
Oh, I was just quite tasked where there'd be a motion to add.
Motion is there, secondary, Counselor Reddick, all in favor? Closed. Counselor Bestwick, opposed. Okay, be added. Okay, any other discussion before we move on? Okay, Don Beach from Danny Hadek? Mr. Hadek, has come on the call? Sorry, I apologize.
It's all good.
Uh, "As regards suggestions for in West Coast culture to the world and commodity anomalous is the only gateway to Vancouver." This has come on up to me, like, thank you. It's a beauty.
I'd like to begin with a little perspective.
Yeah, 10 minutes, yes.
I think he's down, Hadek, level at 789 Northumberland Avenue here in Manimal. I'd like to begin with a bit of perspective. BC has hosted two Commonwealth Games, 154 and 194. We've hosted a very successful Expo 87, and then the Winter Olympics in 2010. Most recently, there are serious efforts to host another Commonwealth Games. The main selling point for these events are the promotion of the host city and the province as a whole. The plan, and this, the plan of many respects is to help with transition from a resource-based economy to tourism. I think we can do better. My vision in four basic parts is the next step in that strategy, but we have to differ from that. We won't have special interests or international body dictating our actions, and this initiative isn't just a two-week party, it'll last for the asset, it will only improve in time. Vancouver Island has enormous potential in so many ways, and Manimal is a perfect position to unlock it for the world. The idea is to promote our position as a gateway to the island, rather than the narrow role of simply promoting our city.
Mr. Hadek, if I ask you to move the mic and the chat here at the back, thank you. Thank you very much.
Like this?
Can you hear now?
He's not talking yet.
How about, how about that? Tasting, tasting, tasting? Where was I?
Pull it down.
Down?
Yeah, that microphone requires a spring to it.
Like a Rockstar?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you for your patience, because I'm not the public speaker. So, anyways, Vancouver Island has enormous potential in so many ways, and Nanaimo is in the perfect position to unlock it for the world. The idea is to promote our position as a gateway to the island, rather than the narrower role of simply promoting our city. We need, need to make a world-class effort. So, we'll start with our brand and what it symbolizes. We were the bathtub capital of the world, it was fun and symbolic of good times and motorized bathtubs. Then we needed a change, so we went with a harbor city. It's been nice, but it's time for another change. How many pages are mixed up? So, we need to get marketing, something that can work with it. This is essential to the plan. When I was born here, we were known as the hub city. That's what we need to be again. The hub is a powerful symbol, that shows our identity as both the source and destination. The hub city is a brand that tells the world, start here, this is the meeting place. How about our market? Our first target will be the major cruise lines, who are desperate for new attractions. Cruise passenger, passengers want four things. They want adventure, they want to learn, they want mementos that are meaningful, and most of all, they want to be entertained. We have the ability to satisfy all of these needs. When it comes to adventure, Vancouver Island outdoor scene is truly world-class, from Alpine hiking, to scuba, to some of the best caving in the planet. Any water or winter sport, you care the name we have it. Vancouver Island University will play a large part, or, excuse me, when it comes to adventure, I got that already. V.I.U. will play a large part by expanding their programs to include workshops and courses on site, just as First Nations will present learning and opportunities for our guests. I'm happy to see that our community of the arts is already world-class, we can, it's something we can build on and expand that community in a very significant way. We must begin a pointed campaign to attract artisans and makers of all types, and have them come and set up shop. Our efforts will target galleries, schools, theater groups, craft guilds, guilds, and makers of everything from across Canada. We can promise them a venue that will be the envy of the world, and provide a rich environment for both the makers and our guests. First Nations will finally have a chance to share their art and heritage in a way that is long overdue. What we'll offer both established and emerging artists is a venue custom-made for their needs. How about that venue? This is a very delicate point in history for Nanaimo. We have between the city and the Port Authority a fantastic opportunity with so much potential. Our future hinges on what we do with Port Drive, everyone knows this. We have cruise passengers disembarking directly onto that parcel of land, what a gift. They want to see more than a fleet of waiting buses. The real challenge is to find a way for everyone to benefit from the waterfront. We have to work for the common good. The most important question that needs to be asked is, what will our efforts look like in 100 years? Whatever we build on that site must exist to serve Nanaimo residents and the rest of the island as a whole. This is a legacy to our children, we have to play the long game. I have a way where we can bring every island community on board as our partners, as we make it our mission to promote, to promote the entire island. This is how we bring it all together, to create the hub of West Coast culture. I propose, we cover that property, the entire property, with a park that is in the form of Vancouver Island itself, with all island communities representative, excuse me, with a living relief map with all of the major features from sea to sky. Every visitor will have, will be able to make a walking tour of Vancouver Island, from there to choose how to spend their stay. They can trace ancient trade routes and villages, walk the West Coast Trail. Not only will our park be a major attraction in itself, it will be an indispensable tool for tourists. Day trippers from Vancouver will be a natural, we can keep that, those foot fairies very busy. Our makers and performers will get to show their promise. Our guests will have a selection of beautiful handmade here, buy it for life artifacts. Van Isle Park, working title, will have many outdoor activities built right in. Local charter companies and tour companies of all kinds will have a place in this park. We'll create stages for performing artists, artists, from tiny busker shells to full-blown amphitheater. We can entertain every member of the family. From May to October, every year, Nanaimo will be host to a Festival of the Arts and Adventure. We'll call it the Hub Festival. Now, I know you're thinking, that's a lot of landscaping, but I'd like you to consider this. It's looking more and more likely that Site C will be canceled. When that happens, what will become of those unfulfilled contracts? There's no need to tear up those contracts, our project could already be paid for, we need to stake a claim on that right now. I'd like to close with this final thought. When given proper incentive, cruise lines will compete for dock space. I know this, I've worked on the cruise ships myself. Follow this plan, and we'll be booked far into the future. Take this first step, and think about it, and we can promote Vancouver Island and the hub city as the outstanding world-class destination that it is. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Beswick?
Thank you for coming, I appreciate your presentation and your visit.
It's a huge one.
It is.
Too big for a regular drive.
Reaching for the moon is not a problem, that's a big thing. I do like your thought of the hub city, it is an arrival and departure place, that's what we are, and we are the front door to all of Vancouver Island. So, I do appreciate what you've come to deliver. Many stakeholders that would need to be participatory in such adventure, but it needs to start someplace, and I'm happy that you have applied to that seed with a 50-year plus.
I see this as a provincial initiative.
Any other questions, counsel? Counselor Fredrick?
No questions, just, again, thank you for spending the time to develop this proposal.
I just had to unload.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. It's, it's interesting, it's creative, and I hope that you have a copy, or...
You all have a copy, I think.
Where? Oh, okay. And perhaps our new tourism company, or company, the organization, we all have worked at it. Thank you.
You'd all talk about it, bring it up, hopefully you can put it on the agenda sometime and get people talking to us.
You had their comments or questions? We have a motion to accept a delegation.
Second.
All favor? Close, see no? Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that. Okay, now we have the delegation from Dean Ferguson and Randy Little.
Good evening, counsel, my name is Dean Ferguson, I'm the manager of the Cal Tire location on Old, Old Victoria Road, number 837. We're here tonight, hoping to find a solution for the bylaw we found out at the beginning of this year that we're, are not in compliance with. I'll give you a bit of a history on what's been happening at my location. I transferred there 12 years ago, and Cal Tire purchased a location from Edwards Tire, also known as Lyle and Barry Galia. Since then, we've grown the business, so that we do not have room inside the existing building for all of our stock. Five years after we were there, we started having a big problem with theft of, of our tires. It ranged anywheres from $3,000 upwards of $12,000 a week that we were losing. As you all know, the insurance company will pay for it for a certain amount of time, but that also comes to an end, and they want to know how you're going to secure your product so it doesn't keep getting stolen. When I went down there, we had one container on site. Looking around, I, I've given everybody photographs of all the containers, I see them all over town, so I assumed that we were allowed to have containers on the property. So, in the hopes that Cal Tire, when the Galias were ready, they were going to buy the property from them, so I leased the containers, because Cal had a vision of building a, another standalone building on the property. That has since gone by the wayside, as environmental inspections has deemed it contaminated, so that deal is dead in the water, so we're back to having to deal with the containers again. So, we're here tonight, hoping that counsel can help us find a solution to get past this bylaw, whether it be permits, taxation, licensing, whatever it takes in order to be able to keep the containers. We've had them for five years now, haven't had a theft. We, we put the, the highly sought-after tires in those containers, and we haven't had a theft since. We've gone down the road of alarms, cameras, we've got many videos of them stealing the tires, but the RCP, unfortunately, unless they catch them with their, in their hands, aren't able to do anything. We've found that the only way is, is the containers, that we can secure it. Just an additive to that, when the fire department comes to do our fire inspections, every year they have commented to us that they wish that every tire on the property was in a container, so they're all secured for fire reasons. Thank you.
Do you have anything?
No, I can't, due to some factors, I think everyone's quite aware of where the South End is going the last little while. I have a problem with the recycle depot next to us, but it has changed everything there now, there's people living in the bush up the road. Last Friday night, I got command of a Saturday morning, through a $70,000 truck, someone threw a 30-pound rock through the passenger window, just to take the change of the truck. And we deal with this constantly. So, it's so very important that we keep, and a lot of these tires we have locked up are customers, that depend on us to keep them, because they live in apartments, we can't leave them out where they're getting stolen. And some big A customers, that, you know, we can't really go to them and say, hey, all your tires got ripped off, or anything, or nothing, put the prices out, or, you're just going to have to take these losses. No, not. If there was a way to put it, I don't know what you would call it, but user fee, anything, we're willing to pay now. They're not an eyesore, they're just security, and that's all, and they're all over the town, and they're all over city and their rental sites, real pictures of, so, that's all, thank you.
Mr. McCray?
Yes, through the chair. City of Nanaimo has had involvement with this property in several different iterations, through both community development and finally landing on the doorstep of bylaw services most recently. What I, what I recommend respectively to the chair is that if the individuals wish to meet with Mr. Lindsey and myself, have a discussion about what is able to happen, what is not able to happen, the shipping containers are non-compliance with zoning, so I'll make that very clear. So, that needs to be a discussion with staff, with the individuals, as well as them of the understanding that the property is actually owned by other parties, and so this property is actually being leased or rented by Cal Tire, which the discussion therefore has to happen with the property owners, because the property owners are in violation at that point. So, we would like to have a discussion with them.
Thank you very much. I think I have Counselor Kip?
Oh, we've got, we've got three more delegations.
Oh, that's true, sorry. So, what are the next delegation? Why don't you just want to sit there?
Yeah.
Or, this is the, the next delegation, the same thing?
Same thing, yeah, same item, so we'll just have them sit there.
Okay.
The Galias, could you come up, please? You can sit here, I mean, just the city of the, thanks for the record.
Lyle and Barry Galia, Nanaimo. Lyle and Barry Galia, Nanaimo.
Mike is first.
We're, we're kind of going along with Dean and that here, but we got, somehow we got, they got the containers on, and we weren't notified they were on there, and evidently the city sent a letter to the, to the store, but we did not get a, a letter on, didn't know until we put a property up for sale that there was anything wrong with it, so I kind of screwed that up, but we were in, you know, full agreement with Dean and Randy and that, they, they need, they need those things there for, and we're, we're willing to go along with that, but we don't know what it takes to get them there. Well, we were, we never heard this word, lease. Yeah. We thought they purchased them, well, that makes it illegal, but, but they lease them, so that's just a matter of getting them off there and putting them on there. We're trying to sell it, but...
No other delegations, no questions? Okay, we are prepared to go back to your seats, and if you can add a motion to receive? Seconder? Seconded by Counselor Kip, all in favor? No opposition? Counselor Kip?
When is it appropriate to speak to a delegation?
Through the chair to Counselor Kip, whenever, if the delegation is up, and you have questions for the delegation.
At least I'd like to talk, make it possible, or notice of motion, I guess. As you've heard from this business, and I've been in contact with a number of the businesses in Nanaimo in overtime, we've had some concerns with the CCAMS. Even when the bylaws being written originally for the CCAMS, we missed the emergency management CCAMS, and had to write that into the law, so it wasn't missed, and I know a lot of people use those as emergency shelter supplies, for example, our schools and that have some of the CCAMS on them. So, they are being used in the community for valid purposes. My concern with this is, it's nationally, people use them, the theft is an important one for all the businesses, and you look in here, everyone from B.C. Fairies to Menon Places and that have got the CCAMS in place. The fire issue is a, is a real issue, and it's a concern. I know the theft one, Westwood Metals was in a spoke with us a few years back, they were getting metals stolen out of front of their place all the time. So, what I'd like to do is, I guess I'll propose a motion, and then write it out further that I would, and I, I say, I'm going to say this, I wouldn't be a bit afraid to tailor this correctly. I would like to see, and what I'll come forward is, a zoning use, and placement, and citing, and a fee structure for the possibility, and looking around to see what other communities have done, because I understand, and Mr. Taylor a long time ago was saying, these people are having a building here, and they're not paying the city any taxes for it, and they're doing, so I understand, and I know most of the companies are quite happy to pay a fee or a fee structure for it, and having a usable for them in commercial and industrial zones, on temporary and sometimes permanent basis, I think, so I'll be bringing something forward, and I'll appreciate staff helping with it one day.
And Counselor Kip? Seconded by Counselor Beswick. Any secondaries? Also, sorry, folks, motion, one in five. Okay, Counselor Beswick, the person?
My question is just that, are we undertaking a bylaw review of, I know we're doing a bylaw review of parking, we're doing a bylaw review of, well, signs, I wish, hope, are we doing a bylaw review on something that would, that would capture this, and if, will it be done before the end of 2017?
Mr. Lindsey, please.
Thank you. Through the chair to Counselor Beswick, so, I think it's important to note that the First Amendment was done in 2004, when zoning bylaw was done to prohibit, generally prohibit shipping containers throughout the city. There was a fairly comprehensive review, I think that's what Counselor Beswick, or sorry, Counselor Kip's referring to, in 2012.
sorry, Counselor Kip's referring to, in 2012. There was a fairly comprehensive review that resulted in some amendments to zoning bylaw that allowed what I would describe as short-term use of containers in various locations in the community. But that was the last time we've done any kind of comprehensive review, and at this point, there's nothing current proposed in our way to.
Thank you, Mr. Lindsay.
So just a follow-up through the chair then. So if there isn't anything in the queue to address a subject matter known as containers, on how to remove or at least mitigate some of the issues, if it's temporary, it's less than 12 months and you need a permit and all that stuff. If it's permanent, it's something more than 12 months, and if you want to be more than 12 months, is there, can you just redo it every year on an annual basis? Except if there is no provision to be able to allow you to extend it beyond 12 months in quantity or, like in quantity, I want to have two of them, not one of them. And if you can't build there, because A, you can't, maybe you can't afford it, I certainly know how much it costs to build a porch or a deck, but it's not cheap. So how do we accommodate businesses' needs if they, and I hear it's contaminated, so it's a challenge to sell, it's a challenge to build it, it's a challenge to break the soil, it's a challenge to do a bunch of things. That's a huge issue. And I'm speaking specifically to this property, obviously. How do we help? How do we help our businesses that are employing people and that are providing a service and paying taxes? I want to be helpful. I don't want to be punitive, okay, you can't have those containers there anymore because our bylaw says you can't. So if we're not going to address the bylaw, then these people are trying to find the phrase of our delegation's group.
Mr. Lindsay.
At this point, your chair, I should like to add that, I mean, councils adopted the bylaw, I know it was in 2012, but at this point, staff are enforcing the bylaws that are in front of us. The council wants to give us direction to amend the bylaw or proceed with a review of the bylaw. Staff can certainly do that. I would say at the time, there was a number of issues raised around shipping containers, and it was, some of it was to do with aesthetics, but a lot of it had to do with life safety issues and the equivalency under building code. You have issues where a storage building today would be built with fire sprinklers in it, where shipping containers are simply built to no code, and there are life safety issues around shipping containers, and there has been fire-related issues with storage within shipping containers.
Thank you, Ms. Lindsay. That's my understanding of the motion, that that may be looked at by staff if people want that correct, Counselor Brennan.
Part of the Corps Services Review has Brad McCray leading a review of all of our bylaw enforcement activities and taking a look, so the unit and to report coming back with any observations and seeking guidance and field support. Thanks for being very well followed by them.
Counselor Brennan?
Thank you. I would, I'd like to find a quicker, maybe not a final solution to this, but a quicker remedy for the business owners. So I would move to refer this issue to staff to have discussions with the business owners on the issue of making their containers. I don't think they're going to make them compliant unless we do a variance, but find a solution to the issue of the containers. I'd like the staff to work with.
Mr. McCray?
Through the chair, I can appreciate council's comments. Some of the, I did the research previously for the Williams Lake shipping container example. I did the shipping containers for Williams Lake as well as a couple other municipalities. Some of the major concerns were life safety issues had to do with placement on the property. What was happening was a lot of the containers were putting on single-family residential areas and not having any time periods, 30, 60, 90 days for construction and other things like that. So there, it takes time to take a look at where the containers are. It takes time for us to do a thorough examination of what exactly Nanaimo's issue is. Williams Lake was a different example than St. North Vancouver would be, would be chilled back, et cetera. So until we know exactly where they are, what the issues are, what our concerns are, it would be a little preemptive to.
Okay. I made a, my mistake here, we do have a motion. Is there a seconded for Counselor Brennan's motion?
I can speak to it. Someone can second.
Seconded, I think we should go to.
I think that there are only three containers on that property. They house tires. There's some benefit to us in terms of fire safety. Fire, he said that there was some fire protection involved in it. So I think we should look at this as a single issue and then use it if we want to look at the bigger issue. But in this case, it's not in the center of town. It's, who knows, several miles outside of the downtown core. It's not really in the neighborhood. There's no reason why we couldn't look at the three containers and see how we might be able to come to some agreement. Staff may come back to us and say it's impossible, there's things there that you never could have imagined. But at this point, I'd really like the staff to have a look at this individually and that.
Counselor, door.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Yeah, I'll certainly support Counselor Brennan's motion. I hear that a review of the bylaw generally might be somewhere down the road, and I'm sure the bylaw is there for a good reason, but I certainly have sympathy for the delegations, and I think it's a case where situations need to be looked at, in this case individually. Every situation's a bit different. So I'd certainly like to explore ways that we can look for assisting this company, this business in the short term, whether that involves informal discussions, which I heard Mr. McCray offer and Mr. Lindsay, or via the motion that Counselor Brennan is putting forward, which I think is basically the same thing. So let's at least examine if there's a way to provide a short-term solution, and in the longer term, we'll think the bylaw will go. Thank you.
Counselor Bullard, next. Oh, sorry, Ms. Sarah, you want to speak there? After him, I just, if you're going to clarification.
Yeah, I'll support the motion on the table. It is a broader issue, and I'm glad that Counselor Kip is going to come forward with something on that. When you see the pictures here, they're all over, and if the city is breaking its own bylaw, then what's up with that? Also, one has to look at the fact that shipping containers are a form of housing. Once they're redone to a certain extent, and if we do them as housing, they're a breach in container watching. So I think it's a growing thing, it's growing in complexity all the time, but our best will be to support Counselor Brennan's.
Sarah, your certification?
Yeah, sorry, I stepped out during the beginning of the conversation, so I didn't have the benefit of Mr. McCray or Mr. Lindsay's comments, but I just want to make sure I understand the direction being given to staff. Are you asking staff to go away and see if there's ways not to comply with our bylaws and to find a way to provide an exemption for requirement under a bylaw or to look for funding to assist one of the parties? And maybe I could ask Mr. Lindsay sort of to repeat that because I'm unsure what you want us to go back to. If it's an issue of, are we enforcing compliance, or we haven't enforced compliance, do you want us to not enforce compliance and give an exemption, and do we have that ability under the bylaw to do it? What are the risks to the city? Or just simply facilitate a space for both parties to come together and have a conversation and outlining what the bylaws are and what the rules are so that they can all be in the same room together?
I'm asking that. Yeah, I guess Counselor Brennan.
The way that I envisioned it happening was that our staff would meet with the men who came tonight, talk about what, where it doesn't comply, explore whether there would be ways to bring it into compliance, whether they could request a variation, whatever comes up in the conversation about how this might be made to work with these. If the bigger picture is going to be proposed in a week, well, that could happen simultaneous, but I would like to see if we can find a way to assist these within the limits of our rules, which may include variances. I don't know that, that's why I want our staff to explore that.
Can I ask Mr. Lindsay if his bylaw, if there are variances or exemptions available in that bylaw?
Before we do that, please allow Counselor Brennan to speak.
My apologies.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
Thank you. It's just my opinion that there's no utility to, I don't disagree with the motion, but there's no utility to send staff to meet with the owners and the operators to explain why the bylaw for the containers is noncompliant and that, sorry, our hands are tied, can't do anything about it. There's no provision that's inside this bylaw that says that, you know, you can do this, don't worry, but it's okay. So for me, am I okay with sending everybody off to meet and discuss? Sure. Do I think there's any utility to it? It's like it's going to come back with a solution? I don't think it's going to come back with a solution. I'm only speaking for myself. So to me, a motion that needs to be discussed and crafted is along the lines of take no action on the property owners or its operators until such time as the bylaw has been reviewed for the city of Nanaimo. Because I am sure this isn't the only sitting duck out there. So this would put some urgency into our staff, us, to review our existing bylaw, make some necessary changes or not in relation to industrial, commercial, or residential compliance. You know, it's so remindful of me, of the IT review that we just got. It just sort of insert here, containers for records management, and say, okay, here's, we need to review this. And this is having impact on people's lives and businesses and operations and et cetera, et cetera, and not just here. So I kind of don't like the, this one, one place, and way more. So let's review the bylaw. Let's let staff go away and review the bylaw, and let's give direction to have it done in six weeks instead of getting together in the next two weeks to find out that you're noncompliant and until the council changes the bylaw, we're just following the bylaw. Is there a different outcome? I don't think so.
Mr. Lindsay, clarification?
Sorry, through the chair, I'm just going to follow up on Ms. Sarah's comments about, are there options available? I think that's part of what, if I understood the original motion, the intent was staff to go away and identify what the options are. Of course, as Counselor Brennan was referred to, council could always direct staff not to enforce the bylaw. That's an ability that council has on any of your bylaws, and not the same as staff that write the amendment, but it's certainly an option available to council. But we'll, if we're given that direction, we'll go away and look at things like temporary use permits, development, variance permits if mentioned, or even possibly site-specific zoning if that's required. I would mention to council that those are going to address the land use issues. There's still building code issues that originally drove this bylaw and the rationale behind it in the first place that we also have to deal with.
Counselor Brennan?
I'm grateful to Mr. Lindsay for explaining that. There are, there are, there are some options that don't include just deciding to tell staff not to enforce a bylaw. I really, I see this as a two-step phase. We have an immediate problem, and there may well be some ways of dealing with it. If there aren't, we're only two weeks behind because we can ask staff to review the full bylaw, which I think we're going to do anyway. So this is in the interim period. We're looking for a particular solution for a particular problem. That's all I would like to explore. And I, you know, if the decision is not to assist these two men with this issue or not to explore possibilities with them, fair enough, we can just use a blunt instrument and say, don't buy us with regard to these kinds of matters.
Say. Counselor Kip, first, please.
Life safety issues are a tough one for me to believe this is storage or a building. People are living inside of it, it could be under a different code, building policies, and CCAMS are being built as well. We can adjust, and I see both sides. As Counselor Brennan was right, it'd be nice to get a single one, but once we write a single change, other people are going to have to have that similar change, and I think that's why we have to do it all in one company. I mean, if the bylaw exists a certain way and this council doesn't like it, the council recommends a change, we can get it done. And that's as simple as that, if we ask for a report on zoning, use, citing, and fee structure, and we can get it done. And that's what, it's a council prerogative. And I would love to see the life safety issues, I've heard that there's situations of life safety that have been concerned, and I'd love to see the information on that, and that's what a report would bring out, I'm sure. But I understand most on the floor is to try and make some sense and deal with it. But I agree with Counselor Brennan, staff can't go and make a decision without a council.
Ms. Sarah, last speaker.
Sorry, I just, I missed the chain of conversation between the two delegations and staff. Did you have conversations with them prior to this meeting or just outside the room when you looked that they were coming? What type of engagement has it been so far?
Through the chair, there's, this has been an ongoing file. In fact, we had it before council, or a year ago, we were in front of council for a notice on title with this property, and at that time, the issue got referred back to staff. So it's been a number of months. I think the actual bylaw enforcement, bylaw has been with bylaw office since February of this year, like called the dates. It's a number of months that staff have been having ongoing conversations with both the property owner and the tenant.
Okay, and so then, can you help me understand what would be different about this next set of engagement? Mr. Lindsay? No, just, no. I'm sorry, and that's one part of it. And then I caught the last part of Counselor Brennan's, and I'm so sorry, I just wasn't here for the beginning, and I'm really not up to speed on this, so these are very genuine questions. What do we need about using the blunt end of bylaw to do something? So I just, I think I'd like to go first and then sort of understand what you mean by that, because I think staff, if this is correct, have been working for almost a year on this, that we're doing our best to try to figure out ways to deal with our bylaw and for certain issues, and I'm seeing nodding from both of the fellows. Mr. Lindsay, please.
Yeah, just to give you a backup to confirm, I mean, at this point, staff have not been seeking variances or have been having those discussions with the owner. What we've been talking about for the last number of months is enforcement of our existing bylaw. On this end, other locations where containers are in use around the community. So there's been none of those discussions to date about rezoning or amendments to our bylaw. It's simply been staff attempting to enforce our bylaws that are in front of us. If council wants to change that, then if the motion passed, we would look at options available, as I understand, both in the short term and the long term, if that was council's desire. But we would be bringing back some of those other related issues as council could mention around life safety, we would be identifying.
Okay, so another supplemental, because I want to just understand what we're asking, what our expectations are, we'll come back with that. So if we're going to look at the zoning, would it be a property-specific zoning change? Or would you be in a position to be able to do, how we're going to change zoning throughout our community, or would this be the one-off to solve it, a zoning change for one property? And sort of what are the logistics involved in that?
Again, sorry, I think it would depend on the motion that finally got approved this evening by council. I've heard discussion about an overall comprehensive review. I've also heard of a more immediate desire to look at the specific.
I've also heard of a more immediate desire to look at the specific property and whatever options are available to address this issue. So I think ultimately it would depend on the direction we oversee with council.
Okay. I had lots of discussion on this, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, Mr. Lindsay? Could the motion, could the motion, I think, be repeated?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to counsel, the motion I have is to refer this issue back to staff to work with the owner to try to come up with a solution.
And just in answer to the question about the blunt instrument remark, I'm just thinking that a two-step, a two-step solution, ultimately that's where we're going, is a more precise way of dealing with it, that a blanket decision not to enforce the bylaw in any place would be a blunt instrument. What we really would be better off using something with a little more precision.
Okay, so we call the question. All those in favor?
Something's come up that's made this, I think, even more important than just one location, if I can speak to it.
The motion right now is...
Yeah, I get that, but this involves that. This involves...
Go ahead.
So a comment was made by Mr. Lindsay that they're working to enforce this and other locations that are currently in the process of administering the bylaw. This and other locations. I'd be curious, how many other locations are in the same situation as this one? And if we move forward with this one, do we not have to move forward with the next one? The next one? So how many are in the same situation and at this point, basically?
Thank you, Samra.
Could we include some statistics in any report we come back with?
Absolutely.
Mr. Lindsay says yes. Thank you. Okay, can we now call the question? All those in favor? Posed? Same that motion carries? Thank you. Okay, we now have a delegation from Darren Moss. Mr. Moss?
I understand your name, Counsel, but just to go ahead and say this. No problem. Good evening. My name is Darren Moss. I live in Nanaimo. I'm here tonight to introduce the Planning, Design, Development Nanaimo Society to council. We are a new not-for-profit society formed about a month and a half ago, and our mandate is to plan, design, develop, and support projects that enhance our community, the community of Nanaimo as a whole. We are a mix of about 10 volunteers with mixed background and technical experience, with a common passion for Nanaimo and bettering Nanaimo in any way we can. Currently, we are working on a couple of projects. One would be the Albert Street Park. Another one would be Terminal Avenue Property Value Improvement Project. Another would be a pilot neighborhood stewardship program in the downtown area. Another, the fourth one, is connectivity throughout the downtown core. We're anxious to, now that we're incorporated, to begin working on building our partnerships and to moving projects forward. So looking forward to working with the city of Nanaimo and other partners around town. So short, sweet, just here to say that we now exist and we hope to be bringing new ideas and new projects into the future.
Thank you. And Mr. Thorpe, or Counsel Thorpe?
Thank you, Madam Chair, through you. Thank you, Darren, for putting us on about this. Sounds like an interesting new initiative, and I would just like to request that as you proceed and information becomes available on your various possible projects in progress, you keep us updated.
We'll definitely do that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Kohler?
You mentioned that you are an incorporated society. Did you do this through the province agency?
Yes, we did.
Okay, because I tried researching your name and I can't find that on this site. So I don't know if I had the right name or not.
Yeah, I can certainly forward the proper person, the incorporation documents. Happy to do that. Yeah, no worries.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you very much.
My pleasure.
Motion to second the delegation?
Yes, sir.
Also, in order for second to Counsel Bestwick, all in favor? Posed? Motion carries? Question period.
Mr. Pym, it's water.
Oh, sorry. Mr. Squire?
Thank you. Very well done. Your turn.
My name is Pat Squire. I live here in Nanaimo. I come to you, thanks for listening to me. Unfortunately, I contacted Mr. Hong, and I guess something happened to him, so he couldn't get my name on the, on the agenda for this evening. So thank you, counselors and staff, for taking this opportunity to listen to you. I'm addressing an issue that I brought up with this council 16 months ago. I have to apologize to our new counselor that she won't know the historical background on this particular issue. At that time, when I revealed to you the very unfortunate, it was quite a surprise to council, and in a motion, I believe by Mr. Bestwick, there was an unanimous thing done. I keep getting all sorts of excuses, like they want a directive from council, and I keep saying, what can be more of a contour of the land? You get to the bottom of the stones, you don't dig anymore. So, and if there's a body incorporated in those stones, then that's even more reason to treat that respectfully and find out where it should be. There was also a suggestion that maybe we only dig up 50 stones, you know, of whatever nature, but that doesn't fulfill budgets. And correct me if I'm wrong, there is money in your budgets to deal with contingencies that can't be anticipated ahead of time. And we're not talking a complicated project. It would be a two-step thing. The initial part, because you're not inconvenienced the public, you don't need engineers to property. But we know where they are. It's not like we're hunting for some unknown factor here. And then they're set up and it'll be, and those that can't be repatriated to a particular grave could be put into a memorial garden. There's a site up the top where there's a large pine tree on, outside the cemetery property, but owned by the city. And I've discussed that with both Mr. McCray and I did with Jeff Goodall at that time, too. So I just, and I constantly, nothing's happening. I phoned Charlotte Davis here, what date did she, just back, oh, October 12th, because I had tried repeatedly to get through to Mr. Elliott, Mr. McCray, I could never get them in their office. She, I discussed, because she remembered the situation, and because I was concerned. Ever since that time, I made the suggestion to stop dumping on the property because the city's street sweepers go in there, and then more recently, they stripped out a whole section of the lower cemetery. That all got dumped, too. So this is adding to just cities' expenses. They've had a backhoe up there Friday and a backhoe and trucks today, removing some of this. Half of that stuff could have been dumped somewhere else and would have never have to be removed now at this point. It seems like, I don't know why there is such reluctance to proceed with this, to get on with it, because at the end of this, I see this as a good news story, that the city is, saw the historical wrong and created a spot that could be called a reflective garden or whatever the name, contributions by art, people, whatever, to come up with a concept once you see what they are. So hopefully, council can just say, it's time to get on with this. And I've tried to keep myself involved this whole time. I keep getting comments from citizens in town, how's your project going? And they're cynical to the extent, they never figured council or staff would do anything. And I say, no, I keep working on this, I keep working on this. So I've come back to you again to, hopefully, we can move this along. And it's our opportunity, it's in our court now, to do something. So I thank you again for this opportunity.
Any questions on the delegation? Mr. Counsel Brennan?
Mr. Squire, I remember when you came in front of us and told us the story. And then we had a report back from our staff on it. Believe it's as if open, shouldn't have been. And this is where, I'll give a little casey, but there was, the history to this was that it, it involved some provincial directives with regard to headstones.
Federal, I think.
Federal, whatever them. But the headstones, the ones that have been taken out, have been replaced with ones that were consistent with the federal direction? Can you enlighten me on that?
Yes, there was a claim, and I had done the research, that there was something during that period, but there was no directive to dump them like garbage. That was the thing. There was supposed to be a respectful thing. And then the city, or the, Jeff, there was an article by Tamar Cunningham at that time, and they said, oh, we had permits for doing all this, but then they went, oops, we can't find them. But it also begged the question that she never asked, how do you get permission to remove something when there is no family to consult? And there would be hundreds of people, there's headstones back to the 1800s in there, so you're not going to find, you may in a rare occurrence. So how could they just, unilaterally say, oh, we can't find anybody, we got rid of them? It's the disrespect that was shown. It was a policy, but we have an opportunity to correct it and bring them up. We may not, the chances repatriating to the exact graves are very slim, because there's monument bases, there's edging stones, there's corner things, there's all sorts of stuff buried there. But we could create something that says, we care. And so, but question now, how do you get permission when there is nobody to get permission from? So I believe it was federal, though.
Okay, so anyway, there is a history to this and this, but we're not really clear on, well, you are, on what it was and why work on it head start. So I'd be interested in seeing our staff report back to us on it.
So that, oh, sorry.
Well, this would, totally agree. You know, when, when is a gravestone important? We've got a little thing down by Tin Ward, because the original cemetery wasn't believed. Now, those headstones that are all against the wall, they are on the immediate graves, but I believe the graves are there.
Yes.
So how do we decide which stones are most important that they become memorial and which don't? Because all gravestones are memorials in the families' honor. Even if we can't find the family or a member of the family, doesn't really shouldn't respect that that person was a citizen of Nanaimo in the past, and that's part of the history for them.
Because, because one of them, that particular very unique one, and I told you at that time, I did extensive research with labor councils and all sorts of people with the giant granite cross that said memorial to the workers of the world. The city doesn't even have a record. They did for the other headstones, but not that one. They had no idea who that could be attributed to or where that was supposed to be. So there was an example of some historical thing that would be a research project to find out what that represented.
Go ahead, Mr. McCray.
Thank you, Chair. So my discussions start with Mr. Squire back in the middle to end of May 2017. We toured the facility with Mr. Elliott, took a look at some of the opportunities, took a look at some of the past historical events that had occurred. One of the discussions that had happened in quarter three was a discussion with myself, Mr. Lindsay, and Mr. Corson around potentiality for making use of this space. As most council here knows, that about half of it's occupied by actually headstones, et cetera. The other half is a road right away that goes up to the tree that Mr. Squire had spoke about. And then off to the side, on the left-hand side, was where the headstones are. So one of the, we've been looking at a couple of opportunities. We haven't, we haven't touched on it in the last month or so. We can absolutely revisit it at this time. It's just one of those things that we have addressed and we can readdress again.
Thank you. Counsel Bestwick?
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Squire. My recommendation clearly is, and it's one of the, you, or there are people in that, is the discarding of headstones and other gray side markers, or just set aside and stacked and left to rot to make, or haul away, or being, going to be haul away, or whatever was going to happen to them, unceremoniously, so to speak. I would agree with you that today, in fact, there were two dump trucks there in the alley, and at least one of them left with a full load, what was in it, I don't know. But certainly, whatever action that staff can take as per the original motion needs to be undertaken. If we can't address the original motion for some reason or other, then staff need to come back to us and say, we can't exercise the motion that council directed us to do 16 months ago. And here's what we can't do, or here's what we can do, or here's what we recommend now that we've been working on this for 12 months, or whatever the case is. Otherwise, we just get lost in the sea of motions. And unless other people bring this, like Mr. Squire brought it back to our attention and say, hey, hey, then the chances of likely having me falling up on it are pretty slim. So I thank you for coming. Thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
I would like to put forward, from my perspective, too, when we make some of these motions, that maybe there's a verity that this report back to council, so that we know where our motions are. That's something I would like to see, like if we, maybe with something like this, maybe we could get a follow-up with, you know, three, four months from staff, so that we don't lose count of it. I now have Counsel Brennan.
I'll just post that we received the delegation.
I have Mr. McCray's version. Go ahead, Mr. McCray.
Thank you, through the chair. In response that there, staff, after we've taken a look at things such as property lines, where the old cemetery was versus where the new layout is, et cetera, the removal of the stones, there are some concerns that we definitely have. So Counsel Bestwick does raise a good point in regards to, we need to take a look at, staff need to take a look at that motion and see if it's actually attainable. So staff will take the information from this meeting. Myself and Mr. Lindsay will need to go over the motion and go over the information that we have and see if that motion is actually attainable. If it's not, we will bring it back to council.
Okay, Ms. Samra.
Our weekly briefing, that's the place where we have the conversation about updating the operations and implementation of motions. Every Tuesday, staff go through the database, and we look at the action items and motions that are on the books and start talking about those. There's two mechanisms in place to monitor and take a look at where we are on our motions.
Thank you very much.
So this, oh.
So we have a...
Sorry.
Motion to proceed. Senator Thorpe, all in favor? All in. Your last word.
I would hope that she's saying that things are looked at. This has been passed 16 months ago, and nothing, not one stone has been raised up. I would hope that something moves forward with this.
Thank you, Mr. Squire.
Thank you.
She, thanks for talking, speak with us. Not one stone. Ms. Samra, are we taking a break before question period?
Yeah, we have a question period. Yeah, so, Madam Chair, we are just going to call a five-minute recess prior to question period to give us a chance to hear any more questions that already might come.